Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, April 1st, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. I'd ask that you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which stands one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurnavich has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor approve of the Order of the Agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of March 18th, 2019, on pages 2 through 5. They have been distributed.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson. Moved by Commissioner Simmons, second by Commissioner Olson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approval of minutes of March 18th, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, building permits. The report has been distributed for your review.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurnavich, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the building permit report, signify by saying aye, please. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Items A through E, bills, James of Chance for Haley's Milk Run, reapproval of West Fargo 10th Edition Final Plot, approval of a 12-month temporary use permit for a model home, and also E is the liquor license application and request for background check. Any discussion on any of those consented items?
Item C, I think that should say, reapproval of Wild.
Yes, sir. My apologies, Courtney had corrected me on that, Mike, thank you for that. Reapproval of the Wild 10th Edition Final Plot.
Make a motion to approve with that revision?
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the one amendment of West Fargo 2 Wild. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as distributed and amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First order of business on the regular agenda is a public hearing and first reading on the rezoning from agricultural to C-OP, Commercial Office Park, at 310 24th Avenue East. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an application received to sort of set up proper entitlements to the developer to ensure proposed uses within the COP district would be permitted on the property. The property here would require plating prior to development, so this is simply zoning in advance. I feel like with our new comprehensive plan, we may see a little bit more of the zoning in advance. Previously, we would leave everything zoned agricultural. Our land use plan sort of set up specific uses that things may become in the future. Our current plan, West Fargo 2.0, doesn't set up those parameters that this is going to be this use. In that previous plan, though, this property was intended to be commercial. So it's pretty consistent with our previous plan, pretty consistent with our current plan. I really feel like the amount of buffering that our landscape standard would provide between this house, or between this property and the homes to the south would be adequate. And the landscaping standard also increases compatibility with those adjacent residential uses. Adjacent property owners were notified of the public hearing at Planning Commission. We did receive one phone call, primarily with questions on this and concerns over heights and items like that. That was, again, more questions, but at our public hearing at Planning Commission, we did have one person, again, asked similar questions. The developer was there at the time and spoke with the applicant, or the resident, about what they were planning to do here. I did notify or inform the Planning Commission that if it is straight zoning, however, that doesn't necessarily matter what they're planning to do in specific in that case, because if you straight zone it, we can't restrict how that comes in. It can be anything within that COP district standard. In light of that, however, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and review that and are hereby forwarding their recommendation to approve it, to be zoned to Commercial Office Park. Tonight, we're looking for just first reading. I'm not sure that we're going to be back at the next meeting with a second reading, depending upon how the applicant asks us to continue with this as one will move forward that second reading. So with that, I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll close the regular agenda, and we'll move on to the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this issue? Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this issue? Public reading, rezoning from agricultural to Commercial Office Park. Sir?
Mayor Dardis.
Please state your name and your address.
Mayor Dardis and other commission members. My name is Dan Boitey. I'm the attorney and owner's representative for the current owner of the property. We are under contract to sell the property to the folks who are intending to develop it. I'm here primarily just to note my appearance for the record and then be available for any questions.
Any questions for Dan? Anyone? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, we close the public hearing. Mr. Solberg? Anything additional?
Uh, no.
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve with the one condition.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurnavich, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of the rezoning to Commercial Office Park at 310 24th Avenue East. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Regular agenda, item number two. Public hearing and first reading of zoning ordinance amendment to Section 4-427-A-C-OP, Commercial Office Park District. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. This actually was something that we discovered in talking through that last application. And what we found was the Commercial Office Park District does not currently provide for medical and dental clinics, including assisted living, including nursing care, basic care homes. The state offers some definitions for nursing home and basic care, and we've separated those out a little bit from assisted living facilities, because assisted living facilities don't necessarily require the same amount of service staff, and so it tends to feel and look a lot like just an apartment. So we kind of separate those out. So in an Office Park District, you currently are not provided for having eye care, dental, those things, and we feel like it's really compatible, so it was just kind of a miss. So staff is proposing a text amendment to the Office Park District to include that same definition that's provided in the sea-like Commercial District as a permitted use within the Office Park District. Very simple. We felt like it made a lot of sense, and the Planning Commission agreed at their March 12th meeting on the public hearing and are hereby forwarding this request to the City Commission for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Are there any questions, Mr. Solberg? All right. Thank you. We'll close the regular agenda on the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment to Sections 4-427-A-C-OP, Commercial Office Park, and move into the public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Solberg before you make your decision, Commissioners? It's your pleasure.
Make a motion to put it on first reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to place the zoning ordinance amendment and accept the first reading of Section 4-427-A-C-OP to Commercial Office Park District. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three is public hearing to add Renaissance Zone Block. Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Commissioner President and Commissioners. Consider blocks shown here as well as our current Renaissance Zone. It's located on the corner of Ninth and Main and then moves west to Fourth Street. If approved, it'll be the 33rd block in our Renaissance Zone. West Fargo has allotted 40 blocks total, which allows us to add seven more blocks in the future as well. All property owners have been notified, and the EDAC does recommend approval at their February 6th meeting. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Roth? The public notices went out to the neighbors?
All property owners in the block. We notified via letter.
Any response?
Just from the DOT saying they have no problem with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, no further questions. We'll close the regular agenda and move into the public hearing. Would anybody like to address the issue of adding a Renaissance Zone Block from Ninth to Fourth? Is that correct?
Correct.
Would anybody like to address this issue at this time? Would anyone like to address this issue at this time? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to add the Renaissance Zone Block 4 through 9.
Thank you, Commissioner. Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded to add Renaissance Zone Block from Ninth to Fourth on Main Avenue.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number four, and it's to review the Fargo Transit Agreement. Mr. Wile? Mr. Peterson?
President Dardis, members of the commission. At the March 4th Commission meeting, there was a proposed transit agreement that was shared with the commission for 2019. And at the meeting, there were some notations that there needed to be changes to the agreement. Just, you know, minor changes, Route 22 changed to Route 20. There were also some questions on the process and timeframes and so on for changing a route or adding a segment to the route and so on, particularly the Hornbacher's area, and then taking a look at the West Fargo ridership. There has been a revised agreement that has been submitted for consideration. That's in your packet. And in addition to that, Julie Baumann and Matt Peterson have some information to share with you tonight on how route changes might take effect and so on.
Thank you, Mr. Wile. My apologies, Mrs. Baumann. When Matt was at the podium, I didn't see you come up and sit down. My apologies. You're welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you. Mr. President, West Fargo Commissioners, thank you for having us back. We are more than happy to give you any answers and hopefully complete out your questions on the transit system. A little bit about, and we do have a presentation, I keep looking at the, and I'm not very good at this, I'm sorry, so Matt. Thank you, sorry. And you'll see on your screen right here, there were questions about ridership. So what we did was, we took by month, and you'll see on there that there is, this is for 2018, there'll be a total at the bottom, and this is for fixed route, so we're starting with fixed route. Oh, I'm sorry, paratransit. Oh, my apologies. And the map that you see there, this is some new software we have, and what those dots are showing are locations of where riders are coming from, so you can kind of see where the higher ridership is on each of those. And we tend to have quite a few group homes in the West Fargo area, so we do come out and do quite a few group trips and such, which is great, that works out fine. So as you can see, and the goal with paratransit is, because it is a much higher cost service, and it's strictly for people with disabilities, you have to qualify under ADA in order to receive access to those services. So we like to get everybody where they're going, we want to make sure we're offering good service, but we like to stay nice and steady ridership, too. So we haven't seen any large increases or any large decreases, so it's holding steady on that one. And we're going to look now at the fixed route system. We're just showing it on this particular map, we're showing Route 20 and Route 24. So Route 24 is the newer one that goes down, covers the new Sanford, goes down around by Costco, cash-wise in that area, so south of Interstate, and then it comes up and it meets up at West Acres. And then you'll see the green route, which is Route 20, and that travels through West Fargo, catches the high-rise on the west side and goes by the new Essentia rebuild. We also have it where it goes out and it touches on the Cass County Jail, which was a big request we had on our last transit development plan, so we were able to implement that this time around, and it's been very well received, so. And as far as ridership, you can see down in the corner there on Route 20, the total ridership was 43,854, and then, and when you look at the 24, a little over 27,000. With new routes, you want to make sure that you give them at least a year to kick off and get an opportunity to pick up some riders. So we're seeing a lot of development in that area, and we're seeing ridership change there as well. Then this, this is about cost, so I'm hoping this answers your question. If you take a look at the two different routes, we took the mileage for each route, and that's how we divvied it out. So when you look at the percentage of miles within Route 20 and within Route 24, those percentages are the parts that are in the city of West Fargo. So we calculated an annual mileage, and then we have a cost per mile, which is broken down further, and I can share that with you, too. To get a total cost, and then you go from 2018 to 2019, the total increase in that is 2.29%. So that's the increase from 18 to 19 for fixed route service. For paratransit, it's a 2.28% increase, and that's reflective of the increase we received from our contractor for his transit for this year. Paratransit, as I was saying, is a much costlier service to provide. The actual cost prior to any subsidies or any fares or anything is more right around $38 per ride, so. Anyway, so we, Matt's here as well, happy to answer any questions, but we do have a demonstration on the route software we have, because I know there were questions on what if we did this, what if we did that. So Matt's going to step up here and help with that. And it's a very effective tool. I need a lot better on the computer.
All right, so this is our software that we use to help us in route planning. It gives us, the name of it is called Remix. It gives us some very interesting information. We can go in and we can draw route lines, we can put bus stops in there, and it kind of gives us the environmental justice information, how many jobs are in the area, low income, people with disabilities, all based on the most recent census data. And we can make changes on the fly and see how that's going to kind of affect the route. So what I did in anticipation of this meeting, I know part of the, and I, you're right, I always want to look at that screen over there, sorry, is I went in and looked at our current Route 20. That's what this one looks like. It hubs out of West Acres, travels through West Fargo, travels up by Cass County Jail, small business center, back to West Fargo, and it does it on a continuous hour or a 60-minute loop. The new Hornbacher's that I believe is in question is down right in this area here. I should look here, because I, yeah. So it's like right here. If we were to change Route 20, by doing that, you can see we would lop off quite a bit. This really light green line is where the old Route 20 is. We would cut off quite a bit of service for people to do that. So unfortunately, Route 20 just isn't an option for us to reroute at this time to go to the new Hornbacher's. Our other route out there is 24. This is a new route that was started July 1st of 2017 in, with the new Sanford Medical Center. Again, it hubs out of West Acres, comes down, travels through Sanford, Costco, cash-wise into the Eagle Run area and back. This route takes about 57 minutes right now to complete. If we were to try and add that into Hornbacher's by cutting off the Eagle Run area and bringing it up here, it brings our travel time to about 63 minutes, and it is a 60-minute route. So neither one of the routes that we have right now, I guess, long story short, is we cannot service that new Hornbacher's area. However, in the future, we can definitely look at planning a new route, changing some of the routes, but we would likely need a new vehicle. Unfortunately, there's just not enough good thorough, through roads for us to get to that and service all the people that we're currently servicing. I'll let Julie talk to about buses and things like that and purchasing them, but if you have any questions for me, I know I went over that really fast.
So tell me, okay, what I'd like you to do is go to the Cass County one, you said you just mentioned them. Go to that route and tell me how you got them so quickly in there then, how they managed to get in.
Okay, so the Cass County here? Is this what you're talking about?
I've got the Cass County Jail.
Yep, okay. So on the heels of our last transit development plan, which, if you hear me say TDP, that's what I'm talking about, what had happened was, we had reorganized our routes and our fleet. We had changed some of our 60-minute and 30-minute routes into a 90-minute route, such as Route 18, so that we would have a fleet vehicle that we could service. Since West Fargo only had 30-minute service on their Route 22 at the time, and they didn't want to pay for 30-minute service and only wanted 60-minute service, we then took that other half of that route and put it towards the Cass County Jail, because they had come and petitioned us. And so we had the equipment at the time to do that, and we had that gap in our schedule with the new organization. We did that really large route change July of 2017, wasn't it? Yeah, it was, it was with Route 24 that we implemented the whole thing. And that's why. So we do that transit development plan every five years. It goes through and identifies any unmet needs that we have, any areas throughout the Fargo-Moorhead metro area that are under service, that may need more frequency. It takes an in-depth look of our ridership, and so that's exactly what it was doing. It showed that the Cass County Jail was an unmet need, and with the reorganization of our current resources at the time, we were able to serve, to serve that location.
And where do those, when you say the Cass County Jail, is that people that are in jail going out, using the bus for their jobs, or is that people going visiting jail? What is the?
No, so Cass County Jail is a little bit of both. It is a lot of people who may be on probation, have to go out there daily for drug and alcohol testing, they have to go out there for counseling. They had a whole list of different reasons that they wanted us to service that area. And so initially, when we started the route, we actually didn't go past them. They had to walk about two blocks, but we were able to, after about eight months, take a look at the route and make some adjustments to that, to give them that service, so that in the wintertime, they weren't walking across large open areas. And so, but that's mainly the people that are using that. And then also, the Somali Business Center is another main point that we, that was an unmet need, which is up here just south of Main Avenue. And then Southeast Human Services, we have quite a bit of ridership that goes through there. And that actually connects with Route 18, so people at, who may get on a vehicle at West Acres, don't have to go all the way downtown to get to the South Fargo Walmart on 52nd Avenue.
So let me ask you that in front of the high-rise on 7th Avenue in West Fargo?
Yep.
Has that ever changed? Is that still going the same route? Frank probably has a better idea than anybody here. Is that still going where those residents have to cross the street to get on that bus?
Yeah.
We had requested that you turn that around so they wouldn't have to cross that, their wheelchairs and canes and everything else. Requested that a long time ago to switch that around.
Okay. So I know a few, prior to 2017, the route did travel eastbound on that and picked them up on that side of the road. With the changeover in 2017 for the major system changeover, that's when the route changed from counterclockwise to clockwise because of timing issues. Unfortunately, I'll be very blunt here, I apologize. Route 20 or Route 22 has timing issues. We're trying to service way too much stuff in West Fargo for a 30-minute loop to be able to provide that customer experience that we want to provide, and so.
So I'll be blunt with you since you're blunt with me.
Yep.
Because I got a lot of complaints from citizens, Melissa, you can attest to this there, that were upset because they had to walk across the street. It just seems like, like, you know what I'm talking about?
No, I'm actually a little surprised that I haven't seen the complaints come through my desk.
Well, I've got, and we've even had public meetings over there, so they're there. My point being is that it just seems like anywhere else, you know, you guys can change the routes and adjust to them, but when it comes to our site, we have a heck of a time adjusting.
Sure. Well, and like I tell our passengers who call me.
Is that a 30-minute deal?
Yep, and like I tell our passengers who call me, Mr. Simmons, or Commissioner Simmons, I can only make changes to things that I know about, and it takes me anywhere from six to 12 months to do that. So if you're having public meetings, reach out to me. I'm more than happy to come to those meetings, listen to people's concerns. We're always making changes to evolve the system, but if I don't know about it, there's nothing that I can do to correct the problem.
This is probably for another day, but I do believe you did know about it, because I, I mean, I'm not going to put anybody on the spot, but I know you were informed of it. So, but anyway, you answered my question perfectly.
Sure, yep, no, I understand.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions? Mr. Peterson?
I have a few. I'm still foggy on how you figure out exactly what our allocation of costs are. On Route 20 and 24, you just quoted what ridership levels were in the percent on 20 is 40% West Fargo, and 24, as far as ridership, is 10% in West Fargo.
Correct.
And when you allocate costs, we're paying 54% for Route 20 and 40% on Route 24. And it's all based just strictly on mileage. What happens to the revenue on, off those routes? Does that, does that reduce the expenses, or what happens to the revenue you generate on that?
So it costs us a certain dollar amount to put any route out on the street. We get federal funding, we get funding from FTA and from the state of North Dakota to operate the routes. And then our fare, what we always strive for is about a 15% fare box recovery, so between our pass sales and the cash fare that people pay onboard the vehicle, we want that to cover about 15% of our operating costs. The last couple of years, we've been between 11 and 13% pretty consistently, but there is, there really is no profit or revenue in a transit system, because it is very heavily subsidized by FTA and by the state. We're only actually paying about 20% local of any costs.
Okay, I understand, that's not a profit center, but on the other hand, you've got the expenses here for these two routes, and then you've got them prorated. Has that been reduced by the revenues, whatever revenue stream? I mean, is that a net? Net of income? I mean, are fares not even factored into it, and someone else is keeping the fares?
Right, yep. So we do put in.
Do I reduce the charge?
Yeah. When you, pardon me. When you look at the full operating cost of the system for fixed route, what we do is, we take it, it's actually 3.6 million. Okay, that's the cost to run it. We back out any subsidies or revenues, like you say, fare box revenue, pass sales, any of that, that all comes off the top. And then what we do is, it's a percentage. And then what we do is it's a percentage match with Federal Transit Administration. So after all the costs have been reduced based on any fares and subsidies, then there's that amount left, and then it's 50% of that, 50% local, 50% federal. So that's, that's where we come up with the cost that we actually incur, I guess.
I guess I, I know just because you happen to run more miles in here, we seem to be carrying the, you know, the larger load, at least on these particular routes, just, at least on paper, that's the way it appears.
I agree. You know, and that is one of the concerns, you know, oftentimes I'll say, you know, we run our routes past cornfields to get to different populated areas. And unfortunately, in this scenario, there is a pretty good span on Route 24 where we do travel quite a distance that has a, what's the word I'm looking for? A sparsier neighborhood, a single-family home neighborhood, for us to get into Eagle Run and, you know, have some of that ridership that's in there. So those are all things that we can take a look at for future changes.
Well, personally, I think we need more analytical data. You know, we, how are we supposed to know whether we got a good route in the city? I understand you have to give them a little time to develop, but we don't have good numbers as to ridership in certain areas and revenues and how it's offset with the expenses. I mean, me, it's just, well, it's X number of miles and, you know, 54% happens to be in the city limits of West Fargo, so therefore you pay that, you know. I just, I don't agree with that whole model. I guess the same question that, you know, Commissioner Simmons has asked. I think those are things we, I don't want to explode this up now and say we're not going to sign it. Personally, I guess I think we're going to move ahead with it and try to make any revisions we can in the years ahead. But I think there's got to be, I've got a way of looking at exactly how you allocate costs and then deciding what the route should be, how they should be structured, and stuff like that, so.
If I could just dive into that just for one second. So you're saying that the cost that we're paying is 20% of what the actual-
I was mistaken. I have capital information on my head. That's 80/20, operating's 50/50. Sorry, we've been in meetings all day for renovation project. I apologize. But it's actually 50/50 is our operating.
Because, because you know, when I take the approximately 20,000 people, or 20,000 rides that came out of West Fargo over the last year, you know, that's costing $14 per rider in terms of the city to provide that service. So if that's actually half of the actual cost, I mean, that's, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, I guess.
Right.
Commissioner Simmons.
I think, you know, like Commissioner Thor, I mean, I think we're on the same page here, you know. My concern is that you mentioned cornfields. Why the heck are we out there then? I mean, I don't know the statistics like you folks do, but just in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, Eagle Run, the Wilds, that area, they're a well-to-do area. I don't know, again, millennials use the bus, who, you know that stuff, obviously, hopefully. But to me, in my mind, I'm thinking of the less fortunate people that need a bus ride to the grocery store, need a bus ride, you know. And those people are right where you're at right now, in this area and in the north area of our communities. Not so much out in the brand-new wilds and the brand-new shadow woods. And so to me, that's what needs to be looked at. How do we get, you know, is there a bus that comes down third, fourth in this area? I do not think so. So why not? Why are we pushing way out to the cornfields, like you mentioned? Who, I mean, did we decide that, that I'm unaware of at some point? Larry?
Yeah, I've got some input on that.
Mr. Wile?
That, when the transportation or the transit development plan was completed a couple of years back, there was several comments that we received from citizens in the Eagle Run area that wanted to see service Eagle Run. And that was shared with the commission at that time. And based on that, when the opportunity came for a route restructure or a route addition that serviced part of Fargo and part of West Fargo, that was taken into consideration. So that's how Eagle Run got served.
And I was part of that, I'm sure, so I'll take the blame on that as well.
And then, you know, performance, you really don't know how to gauge that until you actually run the routes, trial and error, and if it doesn't perform, then you take a look at making adjustments. And that's where I think we have some opportunities down the road, take a look at the performance that we have. And then if we need to make some adjustments, work out how best can the service work.
You know, Route 24 is costing, based off of 2018, ridership is costing $49 per ride.
That's crazy.
Really nice one.
The usual operating cost is right around $55 per revenue hour. So when you're taking into consideration capital and maintenance and maintenance staff and all of that, it all rolls into that. If I could go back to Commissioner Thorstedt, we do have a breakdown of where the riders are getting on. And we, I thought we'd rolled that over, but we can sort of make sure you get that. So you can see where people are boarding and deboarding, or I'm sorry, not deboarding, just boarding. But should give you an idea of where people are riding from for both routes.
I think that'd be good information. But also, again, I'd like to see a form on, I don't know, Mr. Olson, are you on the subcommittee, subcommittee? Maybe in the coming year, we can come up with a better way of just saying, well, it's X number of miles, so therefore, you know, you got X number of miles in your area, therefore pay this much, regardless of the performance of the route, because someone else is benefiting then, you know, from the revenues and stuff like that. I just think there has to be a better way of looking at the whole system. And how, and like the cost, like, we're paying some of the costs we're talking here. I mean, we need to look at maybe doing something different. And I'm not, I'm not against transit. I think we need to provide it. There's certainly things that are good.
I mean, I mean, as a comparison, Route 20 costs us about $8 per ride, Route 24 costs us $49 per ride based off of 2018 ridership. I mean, Route 20 is a great ride, I mean, a great route in West Fargo from a cost perspective, I would think, but-
That would tell me that Route 24 needs to be moved then, right?
Uh, we need to look at adjusting it, yeah.
Well, and again, the whole reason I tabled, or I wanted this request to be tabled was for this exact conversation to come up. But it does concern me when I hear down the road in government, I don't even know when that is, quite honestly. I mean, when you say down the road, I want, I want assurances within a year here we'll get on. You know, check this out. I don't want to hear down the road because who knows when that is?
So if I can, as Julie had said, anytime that we put a new fixed route in place, we always want to give it a solid 12 to 24 months so that we can get some patterns. A lot of people who are transit-dependent won't move out to areas that don't have bus service because they have no way of getting there, right? And so once we've established that route and it's out there, then they'll start to move out there, and we'll see that that ridership will become a little bit more steady, which is why when we do our ridership, we'll pull it for the entire year, and then we'll pull it for like the past 30, 60, 90 days so that we can see, you know, we were sporadic the first six months of the route, and then we started to get some regular riders, things like that. The other piece of that is April 30th, our NTD or our National Transit Database Report is due. And that's typically when we, so what we do with that report is we filter in all of the information for our routes, our mileage, our passenger miles, our costs, everything. After that is generally when we go back through and take a look at all of our routes and then plan for any changes to a route. We usually try and plan for changes in that July to October timeframe, mainly because of weather in this area. Anytime we change a fixed route, that can be difficult for people to learn, mistakes are made, whether it's on the driver or the passenger's point, and we don't want people out in the cold. So we do always try and do our route changes between that July and October.
So how long has Route 24 been up and running now?
July 1st of 2017.
17, right.
So we missed the last transit develop, or the last NTD report. So this will be the first NTD report with a full year on there, and then we'll evaluate all of the bus stops.
So what I'm hearing you say is that enough time has gone by, correct?
I'm saying enough time has gone by for us to evaluate Route 24, take a look at the cost, and then propose any changes for this coming summer fall. But we do have a public process that we have to go through as well that takes them.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Commissioners, any additional questions? Six to eight weeks ago, I met with Mr. Wile, and I raised some of these exact same questions. And that's when I asked Larry to, excuse me, Mr. Wile, to bring you folks in and discuss this with us because I did the math too, and Mr. Jurdavig is just about pennies on to what I come up with. He's a lot smarter than I am, so I'm happy about that. So what I would like to suggest is thank you for your time this evening. And I'd like at least two commissioners to volunteer to, as a subcommittee, to, as this process goes on, and to spend specific time with Mr. Wile on this development. And if you would share any additional analytics that you do have with regarding these routes and the cost analysis from your perspective. But I would, I would request this evening that I have two volunteers.
Oh, I am on the subcommittee.
I was hoping you'd step up, Commissioner Olson. Thank you. You're one. Mr. Jurdavig, thank you both gentlemen. So with that, we thank you, Mr. Peterman. Ms. Bommelman, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. What is your pleasure on the transit agreement, gentlemen? So we're going to have, are you, is there a motion? Hearing no motion, we'll move to the next, we'll review it after the committee has a time, opportunity to visit with Mr. Wile and the folks at the, all right, very good. Next order of bids. Is the Neighborhood Revitalization Program application, Mr. Wile?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the commission. This evening, I'd like to introduce to you information regarding a new program that we've been talking about in staff. The Neighborhood Revitalization Program is a program that intends to encourage homeowners to reinvest in their homes which will increase the taxable value and strengthen our neighborhoods in the community. We're looking at targeting the area that's north of our state, so primarily the older neighborhoods within the community. The partnership would be between the city and Gate City Bank, as is proposed. The bank proposes to offer lower interest loans to homeowners to make improvements to their, to their properties. Loans can be up to $75,000 or just under 4%, at just under 4% for 10 years or 15 years. Homeowners are to address code deficiencies and structural issues as well as other improvements. The city would act as the application receiver, would take a look at conducting initial and final inspections, and we would provide technical assistance to both homeowners and to the bank. The city proposes to not have application fees and also waive permit and inspection fees. The program would be proposed to be launched April 15th, which would be the next city commission meeting, if the commission is inclined to consider moving forward with that program. And tonight, we do have a couple of representatives from Gate City Bank, John McAllister and Brandy Huguen. And between the three of us, we would try to answer any questions that you might have. And then if the program information that is in your agenda packet needs some tweaking on that, we would take a look at doing that between now and the next meeting. I guess with that, we'd be open for any questions, and I'd like to introduce to you John and Brandy here.
And I am correct, Larry, that Gate City Bank is making these dollars available at a cap of $2 million, correct?
Uh, $1 million initially for West Fargo. That's how they started out with the city of Moorhead. And Fargo is at a $2 million rate currently. They have indicated that if $1 million is surpassed, that they would seriously consider doing it. Being a new program, I really don't know how many applications we could get.
Questions?
Mr. Thorstedt?
Yes, Larry, just a few questions. One more, and I think it's good to have a program if we can provide one to the public. But basically, what's the, what's the advantage you have in this program versus going out to lending institution on your own? Is it just you get a better interest rate with this or better terms? I mean, what is the advantage to this for the resident?
I can start answering that, but maybe Brandy would like to step up here and help on that.
Welcome, Ms. Huguen.
Hello. Okay, so an advantage of that would be to go with Gate City Bank is we do offer a 1% lower rate than other lenders. And we are experienced in giving back to the community, so we have an advantage over other lenders in that way. We're the only bank in the area that does offer this program, so it does set us aside in that aspect also.
So one of my next questions is if other lending institutions were interested, as long as they followed all the parameters we have for the program and wanted to provide this as well, would they have the opportunity to do that as well? And I guess I'm asking probably Larry on this one.
Yeah, and I certainly would consider that as favorable, to consider that as additional partners in this. It is the city's program. We are partnering with Gate City, but if other banks are willing to come to the table and offer the same type of rate, I would think it'd be advantageous for the city to.
Well, and I think we also, and Gate City's a good, great company, but I think we'd also want to open, leave the door open to others to, you know, let's say compete, but offer the same product, particularly if they, hopefully it's a great program, very successful, and we go through $1 million right away, perhaps another institution would be willing to put so many dollars towards it. So it might be advantageous to the program to have, you know, competitors, I guess, also offering the services and not shutting the door on them. I know Gate City's got experience offering this and has done it, which is great. And I'm glad they're looking at offering hereby. I'd hate to close the door on other institutions as well. And I think I had one or two other questions here. Oh, regarding, we still have our remodeling tax exemption program in West Fargo, do we not? I mean, people don't take advantage of it, but would it make sense to have that integrated with this somehow? Because at least some of the projects would be eligible for that as well. And again, that, that should be a carrot to some people to perhaps take advantage of this program.
Certainly, that would be our intent. We did visit with the city assessing department. They had a chance to review the program several weeks ago, and we had further conversations with them. Our intent would be, once we get an application from a homeowner, that we would not only involve the building department, but we would also involve the assessing department as it's critical for them to establish a baseline for value before any work would begin to really understand afterwards what kind of value has been generated to be considered under the tax exemption.
And as far, I think you mentioned, the only thing is we're going to waive the cost of permitting and inspection fees and stuff like that. As far as staffing and everything, is there, is it going to be taxing the staffing at all? It doesn't, I don't know if we're going to have a lot of applicants, but I mean, is it going to be a great expense to the city or not?
That is something that we discussed in-house with the administration and staff. We believe that we would have the capabilities where, you know, we could be blindsided and get a hold of our requests than what we anticipate, but at this point, we don't see that that's insurmountable as far as staff time considerations. We also took a look at the costs, and we realized that there would be some additional costs that the city would incur for inspections and so on. We believe that the benefit in serving the community and increasing the viability of the neighborhoods would offset that. So we propose that we would move forward with it for the betterment of the community. Ascertaining exactly what kind of costs that would be, I'm not sure exactly. I don't know that we've really been able to, without any track, go in and see how many, how many homes are we looking at? What would be the building permit fees for that? And that's where the primary cost for communities, waiving building permit fees.
And I trust this will go through the same review process if an individual went to a bank versus going through our program?
to a bank, a commercial loan, they would, um, come in with an amount and probably have a, a scope of work, but, uh, we would have an initial inspection by the inspection department to really determine if there are any code deficiencies that should be addressed as part of that, and we wanna flag those and take a look at including them in that work.
Thank you. Mr. Thorsted.
Thank you, Mayor. When I see these loan terms that says rates is low as three point nine six, I always like that, rates is low as, so what's the actual rates?
Three point nine six.
So is that for ten year or fifteen year?
Uh, for ten and fifteen.
So it doesn't matter whether you go fifteen years or ten? And right now, today, I think the rates are, what are the, what are normal rates for like a refi or second mortgage?
Oh, boy, it all depends on the term. I'll put that one a little bit better.
I think they're on four, aren't they?
I would say, um, three point nine six would be about a five-year term currently, and then if you, um, so if you're going up to the ten, fifteen, you're looking at four closer to five percent.
And these are locked-in rates, not four?
Yep.
The reason I ask that is because I know the Fed, the way things are going, the, the way, it appears they may even lower them a half a point again, basis point.
Yep, so, and that's something we could maybe even take a look at. I would have to talk to my underwriting supervisor.
Right, I'm just wondering, what I'm saying is if, if you're gonna, if you can get them cheaper on the, on the, you know, outside market, so to speak, rather than through this program, why would you do that?
I don't foresee that the rates are gonna go any lower than three point nine six, um, being that they're closer to even five percent right now, so I would say that's a very, very great rate.
Commissioner Olson.
Who's gonna market this loan program? Is it gonna be the city of West Fargo or is it gonna be Gate City Bank?
I think it would be a joint effort between both of us. We would definitely promote that through our social media and any, um, marketing, other, other marketing materials that would be available and.
Yeah, the city is looking at, um, at providing a media splash as well, and we're looking at launching at the next city commission, hoping to get some exposure there.
Would they come to the city to make the application or go to the bank?
They would go to the city, and then you guys would make sure that they fit the criteria, and then they would come to Gate City Bank, and we would enter the application and get them moving along.
Okay. Anyone else? The executive team of Gate City Bank reached out to me, and I reached out to Larry, and in turn, I was at the first initial meeting along with a number of staff, and, uh, I find it a bit unique about the program is that with regard to the criteria, the seventy-five thousand, all of those items that are listed are developed by West Fargo. So we had complete and total input as to how we would do this. They gave us editorial privilege, if you will, on the application, to do what we think is best for the taxpayers in West Fargo and those people that might apply. So, uh, I thought that was very unique. Part of the program is, and I do know that the Fargo and the Morehead programs have been success, successful, and there's people that have been using it. So that's, that's how this impetus came in. I was reached out to and turned it over to the capable hands of Mr. Wile, and he's executed this all. Um, are there any further discussions, Ms. Houghan or Mr. Wile? I thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's your pleasure, gentlemen.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Jurdavich, is your second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. It's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, neighborhood revitalization program with Gate City Bank, the city administering it. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, the only comment I'd like to make is, I agree with going forward with it, but I'd just like to make sure that other lenders, if they can meet, match the parameters and offer, you know, a competitive rate, shouldn't be excluded from at least.
Agreed.
And the opportunity to provide this service to them.
Well noted. Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. For the folks from Gate City Bank, thank you for joining us this evening. Next order of business is the Lake Agassiz Habitat for Humanity Dakota Blitz update we have with us this evening. It says Jim Nelson, but this is not Jim Nelson, this is Peter Christopher. Mr. Christopher.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Jim sends his apologies, but he has, got stuck out of town, so he wasn't able to make it. Um, at Habitat for Humanity, we believe that everybody deserves a decent place to live. Unfortunately, in our community, that's simply not the case right now. In Casman Clay County, there's about thirteen thousand households that are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. Um, that's households, not people. Uh, there's about another ten thousand that are paying thirty to fifty percent of income on their housing. When you get to that point, uh, you can't go to the bank and get a loan to improve your home, you can't put a food on the table, simply. Um, you know, in, in West Fargo alone, there's thirty-one hundred students right now that are on the free or reduced lunch program. Every one of those families would be a good applicant for Habitat for Humanity. So, um, we are the leader in affordable housing worldwide. Locally, we've done over sixty homes, um, uh, simple, decent, and affordable homes. Uh, one misconception about our homes is that they are giveaway, uh, it's a giveaway program. Habitat has built over a million homes, uh, we've served over twenty-two million people. Locally, we've served over three hundred people with sixty homes, not one of those has ever been given away. Um, our program is built on the hand-up, not a hand-out premise. Our families put in time to, to build their own home, along with our local volunteers, um, and then they do repay the cost of their home back to us, which helps us build future homes. So essentially, when you donate to Habitat, you not only help us build this house right now, you help us build the houses for the next thirty years as those families repay the cost of their mortgage. So, um, it's, it's a very, uh, it's a very influ-, or, uh, losing the word, but, uh, a great investment to, to donation dollar. So what we are doing this year is something that we feel is really gonna increase our visibility in the community, um, in our, in our regional community. Uh, we are actually building three houses in ten days. Uh, last year, we built three houses from about June to December, so we are shrinking that system down a little bit. Um, all three homes will be in West Fargo, they'll be in Highland Meadows. Uh, thanks to Commission President Artis and Enclave Development, uh, we got three lots that are all on one block. Uh, Enclave is letting us use other lots for staging areas, uh, so this build will happen June nineteenth through the twenty-ninth. Uh, we anticipate two of the homes getting completely done, and one home, a little bit more complicated design, uh, will go through, uh, drywall phase. So, um, we do not ask for federal funds, or city funds beyond lots usually, or state funds. Uh, we are supported by donors, uh, the money that we get back from our, our partner families as they repay the cost of their home, and proceeds from our restore. Uh, our restore covers about, our restore and our mortgage payments cover about ninety-eight, or about eighty-nine percent of our operating costs right now. So, um, one challenge that we do have with this, um, and everybody in the affordable housing market does have with this development, is, uh, the cost of specials. Uh, right now, we have, what, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in specials on these three lots. Um, we've made a, a organizational decision to pay those specials off. Um, kind of a long story, but, uh, our, our homeowners are income-based, um, so it actually behooves us to pay off the specials upfront, because we actually collect more money from them in the long run. So, um, usually, when we're building a lot here, and we have a lot, it's an info lot, and we have a lot somewhere else, uh, we can absorb those specials pretty easily. Um, not easily, I should say, but, uh, a lot easier than, than basically a cost of a home in specials. So, um, as far as things are going for fundraising, all things are going well. Uh, we still need some money to raise, uh, for the cost of the homes. We actually wanna do four homes this year, uh, so we'll do these three in June, and then one additional one, um, most likely in Morehead this year. Um, with this project, we're actually bringing in about sixty-five volunteers from around the country, uh, who will be coming, staying in West Fargo, um, in the, uh, Homewood Suites, spending their money. They, they fundraise their own, or they cover their own cost of travel, their own cost of lodging, their own cost of food when they go to restaurants after the event. Um, we do supply them lunch, um, um, but yeah, they'll be bringing in pretty good influx of cash into our community as well. We get selected out of, there's fourteen hundred affiliates, Habitat affiliates around the country. Uh, we got selected for this program, they select one Habitat affiliate per year to do this, and they've been doing it for twenty years. Um, I guess that's kind of the long and short of it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Is there any questions, Commissioner? Full disclosure, I'm all in on this deal. Uh, I have been helping raise money and, uh, and did make some calls initially with the developers, and, uh, I think it's a wonderful thing for our community to have, to be chosen out of fourteen hundred affiliates across America, and West Fargo was their chosen site. So congratulations to you, Mr. Christopher, and Mr. Nelson, uh, for your efforts, and, uh, I would highly encourage the city of West Fargo to completely engage, pick up a hammer when it's appropriate time, and swing a hammer and pound some nails. So, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, and we are looking for a long-term relationship, too. We, we have done, uh, houses in West Fargo, and we'd like to do more, whether that's info lots or new developments or whatever. So, thank you for your time, have a good night.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Next order of business on the regular agenda is the West Fargo Fire Department's two thousand and eighteen annual report. Chief Fuller.
Uh, tonight, I'm here to present to you our two thousand and eighteen annual report. This report, uh, contains a, a lot of statistical data that we use for our data-driven decision-making, um, as well as just some of our performance data and some of our accomplishments throughout the year. Uh, keep it real brief, um, cover the bottom line up front. We had a total of sixty-three employees by the end of the year, uh, four resignations, one retirement. We had fifty-hundred and sixty-eight total calls, just fire calls alone that represents a thirty percent increase from, or thirty-point-six percent increase from last year. Uh, fire loss was down nineteen percent. We increased our ISO from a class four to a class three. We had two thousand three hundred and twenty-one unit responses. Most of our frontline apparatus, we doubled the mileage, and when I say doubled the mileage, we doubled the mileage for the lifetime of the truck in one year. And, uh, our response times, uh, increased dramatically from where we were in previous years. We had about seven thousand five hundred public contacts for risk reduction and six thousand eight hundred and fifty training hours. This year, I have added our, my chief's intent, um, are my four areas that we're gonna try to, or as a chief, I'm gonna try to, uh, guide our organization into, uh, these areas. Number one, providing the services a community needs. That's not always, uh, a fire truck coming down the street, it's community risk reduction, it's trying to stop fires before they start, it's doing what we can to help the more vulnerable segment of our population with any medical issues, life safety issues. We're gonna deliver those services in an expedient manner, we're gonna embrace innovation in tactics, equipment, apparatus, and training, and we're gonna adopt a safety-first mindset in training and operations. Uh, our mission statement hasn't changed. The, in a spirit of excellence, integrity, and dedication, the West Fargo Fire Department is committed to serving the community, protecting lives and property through the provision of professional fire and emergency services twenty-four hours a day. This is our organizational chart, apologize, it's kind of small, um, it's in the packet. We did have a retirement that's worth mentioning this year. Joe Tintis served the department for twenty-six years, joined in ninety-three, filled ranks from firefighter to captain, assistant chief, and an engineer. Uh, he's served on the board of directors for many years. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, he was one of only five members that eclipsed two thousand, or two hundred calls. So being the position Joe was in and having, uh, twenty-five years on the department at that point, uh, to become into that many calls is truly outstanding. Um, definitely, his enthusiasm and pride in the department's gonna be missed. Uh, we're planning on celebrating Joe at our, uh, spring awards banquet in a couple weeks, which everyone hopefully got their invitations to, so. Our ISO rating, like I said, we dropped from a four to a three, puts us in the top ten percent of all fire departments nationwide, top two percent of all fire departments in North Dakota. We estimate that it's a fifteen-point-six million dollar savings to the community versus being an ISO ten, which is no fire protection to where we are now. That's everyone's insurance, individual insurance bill for both residential and commercial properties. Our rolling stock report, uh, we had, first time we've had a truck come close to a thousand calls out the door for the year. Like I said, our unit mileage is way up, uh, engine seventy-one, the second one on the graph to the right. The blue mileage, uh, that's total mileage in two thousand and seventeen, and then the red mileage is total mileage by the end of two thousand and eighteen. So that truck is a nine-year-old truck, so eight years it took us to get ten thousand miles, it took us one year to get ten thousand miles last year. So we are definitely putting some miles, miles on. Operationally, like I said, uh, fifteen hundred and sixty-eight total calls, six hundred and sixty-two are fires, and nine hundred and six are EMS calls. These are our two heat maps that shows where the concentration of emergency medical calls are versus concentration of fire calls. And we've got maps going back to two thousand and eleven to show the progression, uh, of, of where our concentrations have been. Fifteen hundred and sixty-eight calls, I, I believe this year, we're gonna eclipse twenty-six hundred, and the difference is because we're running twenty-four hour emergency medical operations now after the first of the year compared to last year, we're doing a fourteen-hour block of the day. Operationally, these are how our calls, our fire calls for everything but emergency medical calls played out. We had thirty-four structured fires, thirteen vehicle fires, fifteen trash fires, and fifteen miscellaneous fires. We had, uh, one point four million dollars in fire loss, and that's a nineteen percent decrease over the previous year. And in, in two thousand and eighteen, we had zero civilian and firefighter deaths, unfortunately. In early two thousand and nineteen, we did have a civilian fire death, uh, just a month ago, two months ago now. Operationally, our response times categorized from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen. In sixteen and seventeen, we didn't have the standards that we implemented with our strategic planning process, so that's why there's just with or without chief officers, but we were meeting the mark about forty-four, forty-five percent of the time. Uh, last year, we met the mark during duty hours eighty-five percent of the time, to have the first truck there, uh, within nine minutes, and to have an additional eight firefighters there within thirteen minutes total, we met that mark eighty-one percent of the time. And to have two EMTs on scene to emergency medical calls, we met that mark fifty-nine percent of the time. The difference is that that EMS mark is six minutes rather than nine minutes, and we base that off the standard for brain def, being at four to six minutes within a cardiac arrest situation. So, uh, after hours, we were still down twenty, thirty percent. I can tell you for the two thousand and nineteen data, it's, uh, over eighty-one percent across the board for both, uh, tracking both fire calls for the first five people and the next eight people, and then we're still in that sixty percent range for emergency medical calls. Risk reduction, uh, like I mentioned, over seven thousand five hundred total public contacts, sixteen hundred and four permits and inspections, thirty-eight total public events. This is a part of the department, we only have three people assigned to, but the entire department in the last year has embraced the, uh, the concept of community risk reduction, so we're talking sending a crew out with a truck to a, a birthday party, doing safety fairs here in, in, in city hall, of course, bringing in all the little ones to the fire station for fire station tours in October, and, uh, getting out to the public events during the summer. Six thousand eight hundred and fifty training hours out of those, we had forty employees that attended outside schools, and a hundred and ninety-two separate in-house training classes and drills. We provide all of our own firefighter one, firefighter two, fire officer, fire instructor. We just got done with a very large rope rescue certification program where we got nineteen of our members, uh, through that program. So, training is definitely paying off, and additionally, we did have, and I, I should have highlighted it here, that picture in the top right-hand corner, there is a partnership between the North Dakota EMS and the, uh, the hospital systems around the state. They have the ND Sims truck, which is a big freightliner truck, and it's, uh, they can bring in the SIM band, that's what the guys in the right-hand clone are working on right now, is a, an, a simulation of an overdose patient and how they're gonna need to treat that patient. It's not just the full-time firefighters, but the majority of our part-time or volunteer people went and got emergency medical responders certified, so they are up to date on being able to respond to those calls. And that's the, the annual report in a nutshell, there's a lot more statistical data and metrics in the report, uh, just for, to keep it brief for time. This is, uh, our department picture last year. Excellence is my responsibility is a mantra that a lot of our firefighters have embraced, taking responsibility for the department, and it shows, because we've seen a tremendous shift in the way the department thinks from, from go-go-go-go-go to being really smart about how we're providing services and making sure that we are protecting the vulnerable parts of our community and embracing risk reduction. And, uh, I couldn't be prouder of the, of the department and where we sit right now. Eighteen was a year of change, nineteen's a year of change, and moving forward, we're sitting in a great position, so. I don't entertain any questions on the report at all, comments?
I, I just wanna make one, Chief. You have come so far in the last three years as a fire department, and as a department in itself, it's amazing.
Thank you.
What's been done, so thank you so much. What's been done, so thank you so much.
It's all, it's all our firefighters. It's all them, yeah, we've got great support with the city administrator and actually all the department heads to get where we are, but if it wasn't for our firefighters on the, on the street, it wouldn't be happening, so they're doing a great job.
Fantastic, so, thank you.
All the hours of the work that you, your training and the public events, how do you find time to go out and do your jobs?
Yeah. We've, you know, we went to sixty-three people, and we did that to start breaking down, we realized that we were just, is running into the wall, expecting people, our firefighters, to come to five, six-hundred calls a year. Now, they only have to come to two-hundred or less, and we realize that's a realistic expectation. So, now, there's more people to break up the work, and that's one of the things that, one of the reasons why our model is gonna be sustainable for a number of years. Good job.
And I wanna echo it. Commissioner Simmons said your timing was impeccable. You know it, you know it as much as anyone. It wasn't, wasn't easy making changes, but you and your staff did a wonderful job of structuring the department to meet our needs, and boy, the needs hit just about the time you guys are making your changes, so.
Yep.
Job well done, and thanks to yourself and your whole staff, they all do a wonderful job, and they provide great service to the community and also a very good value, if we wanna look at value, but, which we don't, but, I mean, we really are optimizing the use of all our, our staff and equipment, et cetera.
Absolutely, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief, you and all your team. Thank you very much for your service. Be safe.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Item number nine on the regular agenda is the review of the spring melt emergency declaration. Oh, I apologize, I'm referring to the agenda. Item number eight, review the lodging tax workout agreement with Super Eight Motel. That's why they have Courtney to sit up here next to me.
Thank you, President, thank you, President and Commissioners. Obviously, the President would like to get out of here a little early, and we'll just go every other item. Commissioners, at the last meeting, we brought before you a workout agreement in relationship to the Super Eight Motel here in West Fargo. It was an agreement that was negotiated to be able to help with delinquent payments on lodging tax, and Commissioners had asked for some other compliance issues to be met before they would take under consideration of approval of this. I'd like to say that we do have Jaden Patel here, he is the owner, so if you have any questions of him, or any comments, he'd be glad to come up as well. I also would like to let you know, we did bring this forward over to the CVB because they are the ones who actually received the benefit of these payments, and we emailed Charlie Johnson and shared the agreement and the information, and I, he was positive and, you know, is in support of anything we would like to do to collect the funds, so it was nice to hear that. So, with that, the progress to date, we have, to this date, we have received the payments for the December, January, and February as requested in the agreement. I've talked with Jaden, he's prepared to make his March payment here, yet this week probably, and then move forward with the payments of this. The other item we had requested was that he would get his reservation system up and running, and the reason for that request was that we wanna make sure he's a going concern and does everything he can to produce the revenues needed to cover the payments. He has not been able to conclude that, he has an agreement out there with Wyndham right now, he's waiting for a response for an eighteen-month payoff of that to get the system up and running, and an agreement there. So, that's where we stand, and with that, I'd be glad to stand for any questions and again, request to consider approval of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Questions? Questions?
Have the one on, I guess, the, the web as far as the networking with, with Wyndham, is it?
Yes.
I think that we need to have something in that contract that states, I mean, if we're gonna approve this, we need to get, we need to have a timeframe in there, not just wide open then. And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We do have a timeframe, we've already passed that up, but we could adjust that accordingly to the timeframe that would be acceptable.
Okay. Pardon? Yeah, I, I, what was the, I didn't see the timeframe, you know, I'm sorry, what was the timeframe?
March twelfth is what we were requesting it to be completed by, but obviously, we have missed that.
We've gone beyond that, so we need to have a new timeframe.
But isn't it up to Wyndham to kinda get back to the owner, or are we kind of, we can't really force them to do it?
It is, I agree, but I mean, at the same time, I'm.
Yeah, I understand where you're going.
Position that he has put us in as, as a commission, as far as I'm concerned, puts us in a precarious position because if we allow that to happen, that could never happen, Commissioner Olson. We have to have at least some type of, you have to have some controls, is what I'm saying, Jim. I'm more than happy to leave it up to you to come up with it, you know? Say you give them two months and it still isn't happening, then that needs to come back to us, I think. I mean, I think we have to.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, no, I wasn't gonna leave it, end it open.
Okay, yeah, that's what I mean.
Ended on that, I was just like.
Yes, based on the conditions of where he's at, you know, it'd be good to have that in place here by April thirtieth. Jaden is working diligently to get that done. We've had conversations on his progress, he's actually working with the President to the Wyndham. So, I think if, you know, I consider that a critical part of this, and so maybe it's May fifteenth would be appropriate date to set in there instead of, instead of the March twelfth. And then, we would also would make sure that we stay diligent in following up and pursuing that and keeping you up to date should something not turn out appropriately.
Would you recommend a certain date, or would you want us to come up with that date?
I'd recommend May fifteenth of 2019. I mean, it needs to be up and running by that to catch the summer, and, you know, we have the fair, we have a lot of new events coming with downtown West Fargo, we have a lot of construction, so it'd be in the best interest of Super Eight to have that up and running.
And Mr. Patel, do you think you can do that? Okay.
We have other events coming in this month. Next month, we have concerts and the marathon. We have W in June, which has three days. I'm confident we can not only become current, but pay the payment. And with Wyndham, we should get the new contract by the end of the week, the fourth week.
Okay. So, my, my, my recommendation, if you still go along with it, would be to sign this contract, but put the stipulation that he's on up and running on the web by May first of 2019, and if not, then it comes back to us again. Is that right, Mayor, is that what you?
May fifteenth.
Pardon? May fifteenth.
Fifteenth is why I recommend.
Fifteenth, I'm fine with the fifteenth, okay.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Patel? Or Mr. Larson? Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Patel, for joining us this evening. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
So, I made a motion, I think I need a second on that, Mayor.
A second.
And moved and seconded to approve the lodging tax workout agreement with the Super Eight Motel, Super Eight Motel and Mr. Patel, and that they be, have a reservation system by May fifteenth. Is there any further discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number nine, review the spring melt emergency declaration. Mrs. Fiss.
Hello, I am not Pierre. Pierre was called away on another matter, so I told him that I would handle this for him, and he sends his apologies. On the twenty-fifth of March, last Monday, the Mayor and Assistant Auditor has signed a declaration for an emergency for spring melting and runoff, and century code requires that within seven days of that declaration, the City Commission take a vote on whether to keep that declaration, make it an actual permit declaration. So, at this time, we are requesting that you have a vote to approve the emergency declaration set forth on the twenty-fifth of March.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiss, is there any questions?
Make a motion to approve that vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded to approve the spring melt emergency declaration of the city of West Fargo. Any further discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business on the regular agenda is the update on the spring melt assistance RFQ. I see we have City Engineer Dustin Scott here.
This is our best attempt at an April Fool's joke.
Chris has never looked so good.
Someone recorded that, right?
Recorded.
Well, thank you, Commissioner President, thank you, Commissioner President, members of the Commission. Christopher is at the Horace Commission meeting, dealing with the subject of our spring melt, so I believe he's there talking through the agreement that we're gonna enter in with, with Horace to jointly monitor our Cheyenne River and the diversion, so. As you know, at our last meeting, we got authorization to publish a request for qualifications for consulting services to handle certain activities during the spring melt. We received those proposals last week, or Christopher did, and we did go through and evaluate, we had three submitters, Moore Engineering, Bolton Amink, and Apex Engineers, all three local firms, and we are, at this point, gonna, gonna request that you guys authorize us to contract with Moore Engineering for these services. They demonstrated the highest qualification to do the work, for reasons I don't think I need to get into. They've got extensive experience and knowledge with not only fighting the particular event that we're gonna be fighting, but also are very familiar with diversion and how it operates and so on and so forth. So, at this point, we'll, I'll answer any questions, otherwise, it's a request to contract with Moore Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, any questions? What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make a motion to.
Thank you, contract. Commissioner Simmons, a second, please.
I'll say it.
Commissioner Thorsted, second. Is there any further discussion on the approval of the request for an RFQ on our spring melt assistance? Very none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I would also like to thank City Engineer Dustin Scott and Chris Brungart for coordinating a informational tour last week. They took, put us on a party bus, and we went all the way down to the diversion at the inlet and all the way to Horace, and we drove the diversion where allowed and observed the diversion channel. We also observed the Cheyenne River and had a lot of good discussions. Also, there were members of the Moore Engineering team that joined us on the bus and gave us a lot of historical perspective with regard to how the diversion functions and its proper use, and it was very informative and very timely doing, with all the declarations of what's going on with our snow melt, so I thank you for coordinating that. Mr. Scott and Mr. Brungart.
And Melissa, Melissa was pretty key in coordinating that thing.
Oh, Melissa, thank you. He was instrumental, absolutely, thank you. I think he, I, I, did you bring the donuts, is that what it was? Is that it?
She coordinated between all engineers.
It was wonderful, it was a great, great experience. Commissioner Thorsted also joined in. Item number eleven is the review, the amendment number two to the owner-engineer agreement with KLJ. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Mr. President and members of the Commission. So, before you, it is an amendment to the Segment Two construction contract that we have with KLJ and their subconsultants. The original contract was executed, oh, back in, let me pull up the date here, executed back in April of 2018, actually, one year ago, tomorrow, and that original agreement established a baseline for the, the contract general conditions, as well as set up the initial phase, which included things like a scoping phase to figure out what exactly are the activities that are gonna occur within this agreement, and getting started with reviewing construction documents from the contractor, so on and so forth. The intent of that original agreement was that as we move forward and before we get into the, the meat of the construction, that additional amendments to that agreement would be executed, establishing the contract basis for the inspection and construction management services. So, the first amendment was executed about a month later in May of 2018 and established the, the scope of work for the construction of Segment Two, which is beat and drive to Thirty-second Avenue, and that was specific for the activities that were gonna take place in 2018. The intent there was, you know, a lot can change throughout the duration of a construction season, and so we wanted to leave the, I guess, the wiggle room to get into another amendment for 2019 services, which is what is before you today. The one thing that has changed since the original agreement and our intent is that there was a lot of activity through these winter months with some of the structural work that had been done, so this amendment not only includes the, the construction management moving into 2019, but it also includes some additional time that was outside the original scope to manage construction through the winter months, which typically, we wouldn't do otherwise. So, I believe this amendment now will get the total contract value up to three million one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. And again, that is for the two-year construction duration of Segment, Segments One and Two, actually. Segment One is, of course, complete, that was completed in 2018, but, so Segments One and Two construction management will now get up to that, that three-point-one million dollars. With that, I know this is, it's, it's a different contracting, or contracting mindset than we're used to, especially working with Moore Engineering on most of our projects is based on a percentage, just a straight percentage, and there really isn't a lot of changing unless there's something well outside the, the scope, but this is common in, in many other contracting practices. One, some of the information that you don't see here are, you know, we, Chris and I have met with the consultant on a few occasions to really go through task by task and hour by hour what is appropriate and anticipated for the services moving forward. So, a lot of that discussion occurs, and then, of course, we take a lot of that and filter that through Tina before getting to this particular point of recommending approval of an amendment or of this contract, so. And with that, I'll leave, leave it back to you guys for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I have a question for Commissioner Thorsted and Commissioner Simmons. This transpired before this commission, Commissioner Olson and Mr. Gertervegan and myself. Is that your understanding as others was going to proceed from process?
Oh, Commissioner Thorsted answered that one.
You think? I don't have a recollection of it, but I would, I, I would assume Dustin's description is accurate, but I, I don't, I don't recall. I, I know not everything was necessarily bid out or anything at that time, you know, to base it on a fee base, but I don't recall that discussion, but I wouldn't say it's, it's unreasonable, what you're saying.
What I do have on the screen, and it's difficult to see it, but what you see here are every contract and amendment, if you will, that has been executed since the duration of, of this project, at least when it started the environmental phase, the preliminary design, and then as it's progressed through the initial design phases, through the final design phases, and then into the construction. So, it, it just kinda gives you an idea of how many of these amendments there have been. There will be another amendment moving forward for Segment Three construction. So, I've, I've started putting together at least all these things in a, in a tracking mechanism. What you see here is a spreadsheet that, again, identifies, the yellow highlighted areas are the, are the main agreement. So, this first one established was the agreement for the preliminary and final design, the environmental documents, so on and so forth. The second highlighted is the second main agreement, which is the Segments One and Two construction for 2018 and 19. And then, this third yellow is the third, oh, baseline agreement, which is specific to the Segment Three III construction. So, we can see here, there's been quite a few amendments. But again, that was, that was sort of the, that was the intent. And again, it's just, it's a different philosophy than, you know, it's a $30 million project, and we're just gonna do it at, you know, a base percentage and not worry about the fluctuations in between. This is more of an approach of, we're gonna handle this segment by segment, phase by phase, and really work through what the scope is, get to an agreement on that scope, and then, of course, approve a budget for that particular scope.
Mr. Jurdavig.
So, it's an amendment that was planned for, so my assumption then is that this falls still within the sort of original estimate of the project, my dollars perspective.
Yes, good question, Commissioner Jurdavig. So, the original, the baseline for this Segments I and II construction, they did estimate a ballpark overall engineering fee, and I believe it was about $2,450,000. There have been some changes that were not anticipated, for example, the winter months construction. Based on all the hours that they have, have put in and the additional work that was done, that was an extra $250,000 just within that. And then there's been some other things with land acquisition was about another $80,000, and so on and so forth. Some additional things that we have, again, we have executed amendments, or we noted those changes in scope, but it is from a year ago when they first ballparked a number for this work. It has gone up roughly $400,000, $500,000. So...
Along the line of Commissioner Jurdavig's question, so have you done any analytics, Mr. Scott, with regard to, you know, our standard engineering rates with Moore Engineering is 11% of the cost with certain items left out, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Have you done any analytics as to what the dollar amounts here are, is how that compares to the 11%? B, that we would pay another, another engineering firm that we have experience with?
Yes, we have looked into that a little bit, and we feel that, at this point, we're approaching, or have even exceeded, the 20% margin in terms of construction costs in comparison to the engineering services. Where it gets to be a little apples and oranges is the, you know, start adding in the environmental document phase and some of the preliminary stuff that was done that is not typically done in a, you know, call it a typical sewer water development, construction type project that Moore Engineering does underneath the percentage. So, what we have found, though, is, so with Cheyenne Street here, now we're approaching this, we're right around 20%. We did also look back at the 12th Avenue reconstruction project that was completed in 2016.
Who was our consulting engineer on that project?
The consulting engineer for the environmental work preliminary and final design was Apex Engineering, and then the consultant for the construction services or inspections was Moore Engineering. If you add up that project in its entirety, I believe that was really close to 20% as well. So, at least we're consistent on these bigger projects that follow more of this DOT process of, you know, two years of preliminary design and environmental work that has to get done, the land acquisitions that come with it. So, from that aspect, it's consistent, but what it also does certainly show is that even though, you know, some of these things get done, it's, I think, a lot of the engineering that we've had in other projects for this 11% has been a great deal. So...
Thank you, Mayor. So, let me take a crack at this with my archive memory here now. Just so we understand that, yes, you know, in the old days, it was 11%, and that was kind of, a lot of that was with a handshake and an honor code, so to speak. So, we knew this was coming, especially when we hired Dustin on. We knew these were gonna change, but what we have to remember sitting up here tonight is that that 11% was gonna be gone anyway. I mean, they did, whether it be a small project or a big project, it was 11%. Those days were going to go away anyway. And so, yes, we did know this was coming. We didn't see, you know, I never saw this exact layout, but we all, I think me and Commissioner Thorsted both knew when we were voting that this would, we'd end up here, correct, in this position?
KLJ was the choice of the state for the project, right?
Yeah, the, I forget how the RFQ process went. I know the city had representatives on the selection process. I don't know if it was 100% one entity or the other. There were, and I can't even recall who would've been on that selection committee, but probably the DOT, the city, the county, possibly. I'm not familiar with that. Chris maybe would've known that, and I don't know if you recall the selection process from, sort of, then probably 2015, when we selected a consultant to do the environmental work. Oh, so Tim's bringing up a point that's pretty clear, is that, so, there wasn't much of a competition. So, the only submitter was KLJ, and of course, their, their subconsultant is, well, one of them is Moore Engineering, who's been lock and step this, this whole process for certain aspects of the job. So, and then they've had other geotechnical and/or communication type consultants. But to Commissioner Simmons' point, moving forward now that we are within, or have executed an MSA with Moore Engineering, you're right, the days of just a handshake and everything's done at 11% have subsided, and they started subsiding a few years ago, and that was really what prompted the need to get into a more formal agreement because expectations change, the involvement with projects change, and especially as we are getting more into reconstruction focus versus greenfield development, things like land acquisition or dry utility relocations, the nature of the services really did change and really warranted this mentality. And our MSA and agreements with Moore Engineering are really gonna follow similarly to this same type of mentality. We're gonna develop a scope and a budget, set that, and as it needs to change, whether it's we're requesting something or something comes up, we will come back with an amendment. This one's a bit unique in that we executed an original agreement, knowing that we don't have everything scoped out yet, and we were gonna address final scopes with amendments. So, but we do have several of these, you know, on, on file. If someone wanted to go and research each and every agreement and amendment, we have this information. We've really been keeping it. It's just a matter of change of value.
So, let me ask the question, I'm sure I know, but change orders, change orders are different, right? This isn't the new change order word. This is, change orders will come once we get through amendments and get to the actual project, and there will always seems like there's change orders. That's a separate issue, right?
Yes, so there could be a change order to the engine, because this is an engineering agreement. So, a change to this agreement could come up, let's say, we decided to add on another block of work and add it to this agreement, that would be a change that would come back now, and we, if it was, say, a quota of $50,000, plus or minus, that's where that threshold lies in with Tina and/or her discretion to bring that to the City Commission. So, there's that process. There is now the other side of change orders. When I say change orders, I think of the construction work that's being done, and that's our contract with the contractor out there. If something comes up and we need to execute a change order, that now is a little bit different process, but same thing. It's just we're, we're changing a contract with a construction company versus here, we're modifying a contract with a consulting engineer, but relatively the same process.
Did any of the scope of work change precipitating the amendments? Or was it the unknowns going into the project?
The only thing that's changed, so when we executed the original agreement in April of 2018, and then amended it in May of 2018, that scope was limited to the activities that were gonna take place in 2018, not knowing how far we would progress if something major would come up, and to avoid a change order and the constant modifications that way, we decided, well, let's execute an amendment today that establishes this service through November of 2018, knowing that before 2019 construction starts, we will execute another amendment based on scoping meetings that we will have and that we have now had with the consultant. One parameter that did change outside of anybody's anticipation was the amount of work done through December, January, February. They basically have worked continuously through without any reprieve, and that was not in the purview when we originally entered into these contracts.
But wouldn't that lower our costs? I mean, work was done in the winter that wasn't anticipated. Wouldn't that then lower costs later on in the project?
Not sure I'm following.
Well, the original plan was they wouldn't do work for those four months, correct?
Typically, construction comes to it, a winter suspension is what, yeah, yeah.
It did work those four months. Makes sense. That work then should decrease the amount of work that happens at some future point, and therefore, lower costs, correct?
Correct. I follow that, yeah. Okay, so, part of the reason the work was done throughout the winter were due to a lot of delays that occurred with a dry utility relocation that had to take place. There were some trial and error type issues with getting a pipe bored underneath the diversion channel. So, some of these things had, was a domino effect of, all right, now we can either suspend work and kinda sit on our hands for the three months as we typically would, or we can keep progress going to make up for the lost time and get back on schedule so that we aren't sitting in, you know, October, fighting to get a project complete. Now, we have a good sense that we are back on track, back on schedule. To that point, the contractor has also asked for additional changes to the tune of, I remember right, the initial request was close to $700,000. We've denied the majority of those requests because a lot of them, we felt like were at their own doing. At this point, I still anticipate some form of a change order to be brought forward to the commission in terms of the contractor's expenses incurred with some of these things, but it'll be closer to the $100,000 mark versus what they were really suggesting. So, yes, if things were on schedule and they just decided to get ahead of schedule through these winter months, you would be right, we would've probably saved money. However, we would've still had to pay a consultant to be out there. It's just maybe we would've made up for it by getting done in, say, August this year, so the 2019 would've really been brought down. What's happened is, they're gonna be out a full year in 2019. They were out the full year in 2018, plus that three-month window that was not anticipated. So...
One of your statements concerns me, Mr. Scott. When you told, when you said that it's approaching 20%, when the city was having the discussion with, with you and with Moore Engineering, about 11%, and I did the research on all the major cities in North Dakota of what they're paying consulting engineers, and it was anywhere from 14% to 18%. So, you're, when you say it's approaching, maybe you're rounding out, you know, I understand that you don't have maybe the data in front of you. That's a concern for me. And so, I'm going to tell you this evening that, to no part of the administration of this project of you or Mrs. Fisk, I absolutely will vote no on this.
And another part of the cost that we have that's making our engineering rise on the Cheyenne Street project is the amount of land acquisition and litigation. Now, when you look at the contract we have with, let's say, Moore Engineering, that 11% is for construction, design, no, just construction, design, and completion. So, we have to hire, if there's a, if we have to do a study, that has to be paid for separately. If we have to do some preliminary engineering, that's not included in the 11%. If there's land acquisition or other special things that they have to do, if they do public outreach for us, anything, all of that is in addition to the 11%. And if you look over the last couple of years, like what Dustin was talking about, we've had significant increases in that because everything's become such a field of litigation, and everybody wants so much money for everything, that we've been paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in engineering legal fees, and even more than that, landowner payments for easements, even some of them temporary. So, part of the problem for this is that it's a DOT project, they end up more expensive, unlike 12th Avenue. But I agree with your concerns, but that's some of the reason. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. I just met, actually, with Jim on this issue concerning what you're exactly talking about, and Tina's right. The 11% is just engineering, the 20% you're talking everything. Jim, what was Fargo again? Was it, I don't put you, do you remember when we had that? Minus engineering, now, was it like 24 to 30%, or 25 to 30%? Yeah, so, I mean, we're right on target. I mean, we're not overcharging, is what I'm saying.
That's without a lot of excessive...
That's without that, yeah. But what I'm saying is ours was like, this one may be 20, but I mean, even if you take the engineering, with Fargo's, wasn't it like the total, we had that conversation, remember, with the banker? Wasn't it like 25 to 30%?
Yes. They also enroll in a lot of costs that might not be correct.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Amendment number two to the owner-engineer agreement with KLJ.
Will be approved, the amendment.
Mr. Olson, thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavig. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment number two for the agreement with KLJ. Is there any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Next order of business is the review, the access agreement and access easement with Southeast Cass Water Resources District for the construction of Water Improvement Project Number 1312. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Commission. The item before you is for the access agreement and an easement agreement with Southeast Cass. We are, have been planning a water main distribution system along the Fairgrounds Road, 15th Street West, which also extends across the I-94 and diversion channel, getting to the south side of town, over to 21st Avenue. On the map, if you were to look to the left, that is moving north. Off to the upper part of the map here is the east, which is, here's the soccer, the Park District Soccer Complex, River Valley Fairgrounds has the land in here. Just on the other side of the interstate and the diversion is where these easements are taking place, and our agreement with Southeast Cass establishes our ability to put in our water main, which you see here is this dark line, along with a temporary easement for construction and the ability to access their land. As you, as you know, Southeast Cass owns the land that encompasses the diversion, and so this is just a typical process. Whenever you're gonna extend a utility through there or need access to it, you have to execute these agreements. So, at this point, I would ask for authorization to approve these agreements if there are no other questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott? What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Thorsted, seconded by Commissioner Simmons. The access agreement and access easement with Southeast Cass Water Resource District for the construction of a Water Improvement Project Number 1312. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Item number 13, review bid results and recommendation for street improvement district number 2250, Kensington Drive. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. What's your... Thank you once again and appreciate the patience, I know I've got a lot of talking to do, so I bear with me as I've only got a couple items left. This particular item is the bid results for the Kensington Drive improvements, which is the access roadway that we are gonna construct in lieu of the, as a result of the Cheyenne Street reconstruction design and the access that they had is going away. I'm just trying to pull up the map here so get a, just a refreshment on where this is located. So, at the bottom of the screen is Fortieth Avenue, Kensington Drive is this loop road here. The project that we have open bids for is to make a connection, this is a cul-de-sac today, we're gonna modify this cul-de-sac, turn it into a through road that connects to Hidden Circle so that they have the ability to access Cheyenne Street. The bid results came back as, let's see, Northern Improvement Company was the low bidder and we are recommending awarding the contract to them in the amount of a hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Northern Improvement is the same contractor that is working on segment two, so from Thirty-second to the interstate.
Any questions, Mr. Scott? I have a question for you and possibly Mrs. Fisk. Oh, what is, what is the revenue stream, where are we going to use to pay for this? Because I believe at your community meeting, there was a comment made by a city official, so could you explain how that, because I've received a number of calls asking me the question, if you would, please?
Well, so from our previous meeting, I had left that open-ended and, yes, the decision had been made to make this part of the overall project cost and include it in the overall assessment district as it is, was more or less a requirement of the design of this project to take away their access. That was meeting DOT requirements, so in a sense it's staying eligible for funding. So, from that perspective, it should be absorbed into the overall project cost.
I think what you're speaking of is what was brought up at that previous meeting as well. There was a comment made by one of the department heads that was at those meetings that when he stepped up, he alluded to the fact that the city would pick up the cost. And there was reply from, I'm not, I didn't watch the video, so I don't know who all replied. So, I didn't know if that was a consensus that meaning the city would pick up the cost that we would pay for it out of like sales tax or something, or if that meant the city would pick up the cost and put it in the district. That was one of my concerns because the city typically does not pick up the cost of a project unless there's a very, very specific reason because it sets a bad precedent.
Thank you, and the folks that called me from Kensington Court were very specific as to how they interpreted the comment. City would be picking up the cost for this hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred, obviously that cost wasn't known at that time. So, that's the reason I bring this up, is that I have had a couple of phone calls and they have encouraged me to watch the tape and, in fact, the comment was made. So, that's why I'm asking the question, Mr. Scott. So, you're intending to port, roll that into special assessments?
Well, at this point, it'll be a, what we are not intending to do is directly assess the dozen properties out here, this hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, it would go into the overall project cost. Now, the overall project cost is being financed through a few mechanisms, one is special assessments, the other is, I believe, a million dollars of sales tax per mile, so roughly two and a half miles, two and a half million dollars of sales tax, along with some other sources like oil tax revenue. So, I'll correct my previous statement, is that it would be rolled into the overall project cost. How things get divvied out and how this is truly accounted for might get to be more of a balanced financial sheet, but what we do know is that we don't intend to take this hundred and thirty thousand dollars and spread it amongst the, well, homeowners out here.
Thank you, that explanation.
Destin is correct, also, sorry, Destin is correct, also, as the commission, you have the discretion to direct, if you want something in particular paid out of sales tax, you can direct it that way. I, that's as staff, and we take that forward to the special assessment committee when they meet. That's totally at your discretion and my only concern again is precedent, but however you choose to do it, that's what we will do.
Strohls?
This is like a sixty million dollar project? The whole thing, or?
Well, yeah, the whole thing, and that's including the interchange, and it's also including segment one, which is a district north of the interstate. So, at this point, I think we have a preliminary estimate of thirty-one million dollars in the district that is south of I-94, basically segments two and three.
Okay, so that thirty million dollars is a hundred and thirty thousand is pencil dust in the grand scheme of things to be rolled into the entire project, so it'll be very high for, for the whole district to be impacted by this.
Any further questions for Mr. Scott? Item number thirteen. Your pleasure, please.
The move we accept.
Commissioner Olson recommends that for the street improvement district number twenty-two-fifty for Kensington Drive that we approve the bid from Northern Improvement. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Thorsted, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we, for the approval of the, the street improvement district for twenty-two-fifty Kensington Drive. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number fourteen, review the petition for improvements for Eaglewood Seventh Edition, review the map and legal description for the creation of sewer, water, storm, and street improvement, district number thirteen-twenty-two, and to review the engineering's report. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. So, we have received a request for improvements for a development project to install or extend sewer water and streets into Eaglewood Seventh, which is being platted. The attached in your, in your packet is the petition that has been signed by the developer, which also includes proof of ownership of the property. That initiates us to create an assessment district that gives us the comfort that from a protest standpoint, the majority property owner is requesting or petitioning for these improvements. So, kind of a liability thing there that we started doing a couple of years ago, is requiring these executed petitions with proof of ownership. So, moving past the petition, we have identified the benefiting areas for the improvements due to the nature that the improvements will include a stormwater retention pond. The boundary of the benefiting area is larger than just the Eaglewood Seventh plat, as you can see in your map. These are the areas that have not, they're not fully served yet with this retention. We did build one pond already that is closer to Cheyenne Street here. That was, call it, phase one of a pond. It was intended to have a second pond further to the west, and again, the assessment boundary reflects the way, or is consistent with how this first pond was assessed out, which again was the same boundary. So, just wanted to explain why the boundary extends beyond just that platted area. The engineer's report has gone through and identified the nature of the improvements and also prepared a cost estimate. The cost estimate was then further evaluated into a preliminary assessment. So, back to the regional pond and the enlarged district, the properties that are not included with the sewer, water, and street portion of the work, for example, the properties that'll be closer to Cheyenne Street, the average residential property is gonna get about a thousand dollar assessment. The other improvements will come to roughly fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars per lot, depending on the size of the lot, so. But again, the primary improvements are the sewer water and streets that'll serve this platted area. The pond will serve this enlarged area as shown in that assessment district. So, I think with that, I will entertain any questions and recommend the approval of the creation of the assessment district, as well as approve the engineer's report and authorize the preparation of the detailed plans and specifications for construction.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Or do we'd like to proceed?
I'll make the motion to approve. Can't remember everything Destin said there, but...
Commissioner Olson moves. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. It's been moved and seconded. To approve the petition for improvements for Eaglewood Seventh Edition, review the map and legal description for the creation of sewer, water, storm, and street improvements, district number thirteen-twenty-two, and to approve the engineer's report.
And lastly, to authorize us to begin preparing final plans and specifications for construction.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is there any further discussion?
Quick question, will this complete then the regional drainage plan for that area so that those people outside of this development or subdivision will get another assessment?
Yes, the short answer is yes, this will complete. I'm gonna get back to the assessment map here. So, with this pond here being established, this will complete all regional aspects of the improvements. The regional storm lift was installed a few years ago, along with this other regional pond. Pretty much this entire half section of land is now fully developed.
Thank you.
Quick question, I guess, so the landowner owns the piece that is in the grayed-out area right there, correct?
Correct.
I realize that, you know, the storm water piece can't be protested, but I mean, what communication has been done to any of those other property owners getting up to this?
To date, there has been, there hasn't been any communication as of right now. What I would anticipate us doing would be similar to what we did in the Wilds for the regional improvements that were done with the Wilds Eleventh Edition, is send out a letter, at least informing the properties of the nature of the improvements, the anticipated cost, but wanted to get through this particular step first. With the, with the Wilds Eleventh area, we held, we sent letters and then also had a public meeting. It wasn't overly well attended, so I'm not sure if we want to continue to have public meetings in these situations, but if anything, send out a letter informing them of the proposed improvements with anticipated costs.
Yeah, see, okay? So, I think, I think this is why you see, you saw here today so much hesitation with us, because it reminds us so much of another district that we went through, and I don't think any of us want to get in that position. Is there a way that we can move this forward, some of this stuff, but with like some condition or something, so we can let the citizens know, so they have the opportunity before we bulldoze ahead, so to speak?
And surprise them.
Yeah, we can't surprise, is there a way we can, because otherwise, you know, I'll be honest with you, we're gonna be here till ten o'clock every night, every meeting we have when we have these items, because they're getting very difficult to deal with. There's got to be a better way, a better solution that we can come up with, where we can, you can still move forward, but yet there has to be something in there that says, wait a minute, if we get complaints or whatever, stop. And I don't know the answer to Tina to that, I just know these are getting, they're all gonna get worse, and I, yes, exactly.
Discuss where we're at with the special assessment committee findings and recommendations that we want to have. I was gonna have Melissa talk a little about that, a bit about that, and then explain to you where we're at and what the plan is and get your approval for something. But at this point, the hard part is we're doing water, sewer, storm, and street for a new subdivision, mainly new subdivision, even if the entire thing were protestable, the property owner that owns the majority of the property is, could, he's not gonna protest because he asked for it. The concern is we can't put in water, sewer, and streets without storm. So, and that's one of the things that's been tough for staff, is we understand the issues that have arisen, but we also understand the fact that we have an obligation to the citizens to provide them with a neighborhood that has stormwater that runs away and all of those types of things. So, we will for sure be sending out a letter, letting them know this is what's going on, the commission still has the opportunity to stop the project when the bids come in and at any other point, and if, I mean, we can, and if you feel there's enough protest, we could meet with them, just remember that the more public hearings we hold on every single project, the more the public is going to assume that they get to make all the decisions and you guys are the elected body to take care of them. So, that's my concern, to go to a developer that owns almost all this land that wants to sell lots and say, well, six people protested, so stormwater, so you can't have stormwater. How do you do that?
Yeah, that doesn't affect me at all, that doesn't, but on the other hand, at least want those, you know, I think we all want those six people to know, that's all.
Correct, and we will, I mean, it has to get, and you're absolutely correct, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Simmons, like Destin said, he wanted to get to this point, and then if you say, okay, you go ahead and keep going, then we at least know this is the district, we know who to send a letter to.
So, in a sense, this is a shout over the bow, do those, to tell those people, this is what they did, and...
This is going out for bids, this is our estimate, you're all in the district, let us know what you have concerns about, yes.
Yeah, so at this point, we haven't approved this boundary yet, so if the motion was, look, we understand that this side here hasn't paid their fair share, if you will, but we're gonna make the boundary here, that would change that communication level to just this area. So, what we're at today is we have to create a district, if you will, to really know who we are affecting.
Right.
And the reason why this boundary is what it is, again, is when we, when we installed this first pond, which it's difficult to see here, but we installed this particular pond, knowing that all of this was, at that point, undeveloped, this was all still farmland, we knew the master plan for this neighborhood would fill in with another pond, so we didn't make this larger, we kind of, the master plan of this development was to have these two smaller ponds, but put them in when they're needed. So, when we built this first pond, we assessed the undeveloped land for it, and now that we are building the second phase of this pond, we are assessing the same area, if you will, but the difference gets to be is it's developed and the residents, as you say, and we all know, is sensitive, they don't know what's coming. The developer knew that this was the intent and the plan of the development, we've known, but that's, that's really the...
Just to clarify, this was the same assessment boundary then for the other pond?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
Well, and I think that's a story you gotta tell in your letter, because I think most people are reasonable to say, oh, okay, but if you have an existing house there, you're gonna say, well, it already gets off my streets and it goes right over here to this pond.
Exactly.
So, it's all, all fine, but that explanation you just gave is, would be perfect for in a letter to say this is closing out this regional system, and like Commissioner just mentioned, you know, people on this side, you know, that were developed, you know, undeveloped... you know, people on this side, you know, that were developed, undeveloped, paid for that particular pond, so what you just said encapsulates, I guess, what we're trying to get across, so that these people, I'm getting hit now, okay, it's only a thousand, we can say it's only a thousand dollars, to some people, that's probably, you know, a lot of money, but I guess they need to know that this finishes off a project, and this is why, why it's going beyond just that one little gray area.
That piece of information makes me good with it, as long as we communicate it well.
Well, I have one suggestion to offer. When we come back, so at this point, we're asking to be, to get the authorization to start the plans and specs. I think we, this particular motion would include, we need to have this correspondence, and then prior to approving plans and specs, we would come back with an update on the communication that we had and any comments that we did receive, prior to approving the plans and specs, and then authorizing a bid funding. The only question I would have is, is it of the, of your opinion that a letter would suffice with sufficient documentation and explanation, or would you prefer that we engage a neighborhood meeting of sort?
Both. Please.
The concern with the neighborhood meeting, again, if we send out a letter and have a public meeting, there's a cost to those public meetings, and if we're going to do it for one, we're going to end up doing it all the time, and it's going to take staff time, it's going to burn up a lot of staff time, it takes communications, engineering, public works, administration, planning, it takes all of us to do that. So keep it in mind, we'll do it as often as you want us to, but just know that once you start, you can't just stop, because this district, they'll say, well, you did it for them, you didn't do it for us, you know, I mean, keep that in mind, because we don't want to get to a point where staff is so tied up, we have to hire more people so we can hold public hearings.
You know, I guess in, I'll call in the old days, prior to this last district, we, and we did things different, you know, it was non-agenda, you know, we left it up to the staff, that's what you're paid for to do this stuff, now, I don't think we are, but I do realize the sensitivity around this, Tina, so.
Correct.
I understand that somehow we have to inform these people, but again, at the same time, you know, Dustin, this is why we hired you as the city engineer to do this and make your professional recommendations to us. So I don't know, we're kind of, like I said, in the old days, we just let the staff take care of it, and I'm fine with that, I mean, we've only had in the last fifteen years, probably one district that has really been an issue and a concern, and it was one that wasn't a normal annex in from new, it was an old annexation, whatever, fifteen years ago. So I don't, you know, we're putting a lot into this, and one side of me says, we don't need to do all this, but the other side of me says, I still want the citizens to know what's going on, and I don't have an answer.
Personally, I would just recommend doing the letter, and if there is enough feedback, then.
Then maybe have a.
Then schedule a public meeting, but I think, at least from what I heard from all those meetings, they just wanted to know, they didn't want to get surprised when all of a sudden, here's your bill, and it's like Commissioner Simmons pointed out, you know, and that was a kind of a different zone there, a different area, just because of a lot of old with new. This is pretty much all new, I mean, it's not a surprise to them that there's a lot of improvements going on around them, but I would say send the letter, and if for whatever reason you get a whole bunch of feedback, then it's probably worthwhile to schedule a, some kind of a public meeting, or allow them to speak, or whatever, at a meeting here.
Mr. Scott, would you have the data on the first retention plan, pond that was placed, what that assessment was for those folks?
The, if I recall, I believe it was around ten cents a square foot for just the pond, or probably shy of that, but somewhere in that nature, and I believe the report here, the cost for the, at least the stormwater improvements, is estimated to be around sixteen cents a square foot, but that's also including not just the pond, oh, forty-one cents a square foot for the storm improvements, and that's a local storm. The pond, yes, sixteen cents a square foot for the pond construction is shown in this blue area here. Now, this isn't a lift station, you know, so what I don't have is an apples-apples comparison of all just specific pond costs, but if I recall, I can certainly dig into the exact number, but if I recall, I think it was around eight cents, ten cents a square foot for the first pond, so all in all, we're going to get to twenty, twenty-five cents a square foot.
Thank you very much.
Do I need amendment to that, to include the communications, just to be a letter sent to the people in the affected district, and if there's a certain threshold of opposition, then we consider doing a public meeting?
Is that amendment approved by the second?
Yes.
We don't have to vote on it. We have a question on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is to review the petition for improvements for Brooks Harbor Ninth Edition, review the map and legal description for the creation of sewer water. Did I just do that, Mike?
No.
They sure read a lot, and I thought they, oh, thirteen twenty-three, pardon me.
They blew all over again.
I thought I was losing it. Sewer water, storm, street improvement for District Thirteen Twenty-Three. My apologies. And review the engineer's report. Mr. Scott?
And thank you once again, Mr. President, and members of the commission. So this is a very similar item. There is a difference here, a major difference, is that this won't include regional components to the improvements that are being petitioned, so before you is the petition from the developer to extend the sewer water and streets into this neighborhood, specifically the plat for Brooks Harbor Ninth Edition. So this is a little more simplified in that a hundred percent of the work will be local improvements, as you can see here, the proposed boundary encompasses specifically the Brooks Harbor Ninth plat. So, but what you see in your packet is the same routine of, we're accepting a petition for the improvements, proposing the assessment district boundaries, so we're asking for that district to be created, and we are also bringing forward then the engineer's report related to these improvements, which again contains an estimated assessment breakdown. Again, these assessments are all local into this subdivision, so the range here looks like anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five, give or take, depending on lot size, and again, this is, these preliminary assessments are really based on straight up our policy, so it, there are no adjustments made for things like, this is a really goofy shaped lot, or, you know, so on and so forth, it's straight up square footage, front footage, and it's generated. We don't get into the minutia of oddball situations until a little further down the road, but, so again, I would open it up for questions, otherwise, again, the request is to accept petition for improvements, create an assessment district, and approve the engineer's report, last, authorize engineer to start plans and specs for the construction.
Are there any questions for Mr. Scott?
I'd make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabig. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Commissioner Olson seconds, and moved and second to approve the petition for improvements for Brooks Harbor Ninth Edition, review the map and legal description for the creation of a sewer, water, storm, and street improvement, District Number Thirteen Twenty-Three, and approve the engineer's report, and to proceed with gathering bid information.
Or proceed with creating plans and specs.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion? Very unanimous, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Item number sixteen, fishing pond, fishing pier discussion. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President and commission. I handed out some memorandum of understandings from Game and Fish. Does everybody have one of those?
Yes, sir.
Mine should be quick. A couple of years ago, in Brooks Harbor, we dug a pond that's deeper than traditionally we had dug ponds to try and eliminate our bubbler systems, which opened up the door to ask Game and Fish if they dumped some perch and rainbow trout in there, and it was really kind of an experiment, and the commission and Chris Brungard were good enough to say, okay, give it a try, let's see what happens. As it turns out, it's a really big hit, people love it, people fish down there all the time, and we've gotten a fantastic response, so much so, in fact, that we've had an individual whose wife has passed away, and he would like to donate in his wife's name something for the pond. And so what we ended up doing is started a conversation with Game and Fish about getting a fishing pier out there, and it turns out that the fishing pier would come free from Game and Fish, and they would give us this fishing pier and drop it off as long as we sign the memorandum of understanding between us and the Game and Fish. This is an example of the fishing pier, it has about three and a half foot railings on there with little rod holders, if you fish in North Dakota, you see these pretty frequently actually on lakes, and we're required to also put an ADA ramp down to the fishing pier. This is where the individual, Dean Staska, has offered to now donate the ramp, because the fishing pier is coming for free, and so all he would ask is that we can put a plaque for his wife on the pier somewhere. We would design the ADA compliant ramp, Chris has allowed our new project engineer to work on those designs, we would then give them to Dean, and he would install the ramp itself at our site.
He would do that in concrete?
Correct. Our requirement then would be to ensure the fishing pier and then yearly maintenance. Sometimes you have to pull these out, depending on ice in and out, and sometimes they just leave them in, so. With that, I'm looking to hear if you're okay with the memorandum of understanding, so that they hold the pier for us. If the ramp design is more than Dean can round up, staff would bring that back to you and give you the option to say, do you want to pay the extra money or not? At this point in time, Dean's very confident that he will put it in, but we don't have a final design, so I don't have a final number yet to present. We would like to have Game and Fish hold dock for us, otherwise they'll give it away to someone else. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Just a question, and it sounds like a great idea, but no parking around there? Is it just a neighborhood thing, and you say it's, you know, is the word going to get out, or are we going to have people wanting to park there somewhere, I mean?
So there's a, one of our houses that support these ponds right nearby, and there's quite a bit of parking, we could stripe it. Right now, people, on the west side, there's a park where people could park in the park parking lot and then walk through the grass, and that's just to the southwest of that blue rooftop that you see, or they could park in the cement pad where the, I call it a pump house, I really don't know.
Okay, as long as we'll allow.
The station.
Allow people to park there, because.
Right.
You know, if it's what you say it's going to be, I think they're going to have people that are going to drive there and want to ride out, so.
Wouldn't the path go between those two points, from the pier to wherever people are?
Yeah.
Coming from?
Yeah, I was out with our project engineer last week, and we looked at it, and it seems like the best place to tie the path into would be on the concrete just to the north side of the blue building, and then work its way down there, because the grade's a little steep, you're going to have to wind a little, because you can't just shoot people down this.
I've had a conversation with our Barbara Stasor from Parks, and she fully supports the idea.
Sorry, thank you, man, I forgot that part.
Is this a park issue, then, you mean?
No, it's city, but originally Dean assumed that it was a sort of a park effort, and then Barb handed it off to us and said, talk to the city.
Because of the path and the.
Okay.
There's a portion of that that's city and a portion of it that's park.
Okay.
It's on the city park property.
So my question, I have a question, those, the little white dots, are those those air filters things, whatever?
Air raiders.
Air raiders? Bubbles, okay, so we have trout in there right now, man?
Yep.
And I'm assuming on all of our other ponds, we're not, once those were out, they're done, we're not responsible. How about these?
Correct. So this was dug really deep to try and get away from the air bubblers, and before Game and Fish put fish in there, we had to send them plans for the pond, and so that they could ensure that's sustainable, and they actually come out a couple times a year to check the oxygen level. The intent is, and I made it clear to Game and Fish, this is a couple of years ago, this is our retention pond, we're not modifying it for fish, but they're comfortable, they've had a lot of success with these local fishing ponds, and people really enjoy them, and if the fish die out and it seems like it doesn't work, they just won't put more fish in, but as long as it continues to work, they like to continue.
I guess what I'm going is just, and you're kind of saying that to me in a roundabout way, that if these break down, they break down.
Right.
We're not responsible, because we turned other people down in the past.
Right, unless.
So I wouldn't want to get into it.
You decide that fish are so fantastic, you're going to fix these all of a sudden, but yeah, the expectation is.
Is there one named Matt going to be in there, or what?
What's that?
Matha, fish named Matt in there, going to be in there, or what?
Yeah, I've gotten a lot of feedback about this, good, and.
Okay, that's the only question I had. I think it's a great idea, though.
Yeah.
Any additional questions from me?
Only other comment I have, and what it's worth, but we just want to make sure that we signage that no jumping off the pier swimming, or, I mean, we're not supposed to be swimming in them anyway.
Right.
But I don't want people going out there, scaling the top of the rail and diving in, I mean, we can't prevent it if they do it, but we can at least, for insurance purposes and everything else, say it's not allowed, just make sure that's part of the project.
Absolutely, absolutely, I think that's essential, given our past with a tragic incident, and easily done, we can get a sign that says no cannonballs.
Any additional questions for Mr. Marshall?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your pleasure on the memorandum of understanding between the City of West Fargo and the North Dakota Game and Fish Department?
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Olson? Jurdabig, okay, Jesus. My computer just buzzed, and I lost, lost control. Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabig. Is there any further discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seventeen is second reading in ordinance eleven nineteen, alcoholic beverages to take place on four fifteen. Mrs. Fisk, please explain that.
The reason for that was because from your last meeting, you had some changes that you wanted to have made, and John wanted to get all those incorporated, and then get all of us that were involved to read through it again and make sure it's right before we bring it for second reading, and give you some time to review it as well, so.
Any questions regarding that? Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. City Administrator's Report, item number eighteen.
Okay, I've got a couple of things that I want to tell you about that are upcoming, and then Dustin is going to give you a Cheyenne Street progress update. First of all, tomorrow night is the planning and zoning meeting, I know everybody wants to be there, so that will take place tomorrow night at five thirty. The equalization board, which is all of you lucky people, will meet Tuesday, April ninth, at five thirty in the chambers here. To my understanding, there's just a small handful of people that he had told me were on the list to come in, maybe five, so it shouldn't be hopefully too long. The other thing is the liquor control board is set to meet first on April ninth, and so we'll be getting in contact with. ninth, and so we'll be getting in contact with those of you that, that are going to be on the liquor control board. And, they will be, okay, there will be the final, um, legislative forum this Saturday, from ten thirty, from ten, I'm sorry, from ten o'clock to eleven thirty here at City Hall. Huh? The thirteenth? Oh, yeah, sorry, okay, I'm, I can't read my own writing, it says four thirteen, on the thirteenth, from ten, from ten to eleven thirty, thank you, Courtney. Um, and that is about all I have on my list, and Melissa's gonna come up and talk to you about the special assessment committee findings and recommendations. Um, I'm, if you have questions, my request for you is, with the amount of information that we're gonna bring, and the recommendations we're gonna bring forward, I was going to request, if you would allow us to have that third meeting in April, and have it dedicated solely to just that one topic, and then we would invite the public, and, and so on and so forth, and just kind of make an announcement that that's the only thing on the agenda.
Question? Census on that?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we're working with Melissa on that, and if you have additional questions on that, she's happy to answer, otherwise Dustin's coming back up.
This is our second April fool's joke tonight, I said I was done, and there I am. Um, well, so a brief update on, uh, the, the segment three portion of the Cheyenne Street project, specifically regarding, uh, some concerns that, some concerns that have arose over the past couple of weeks, uh, regarding closing down Fortieth Avenue. Um, the original intent of the project and how it was designed and bid out was to, uh, fully close that intersection for, uh, well, to have it back open again and by June fifteenth, but the, the idea was to fully close it and divert, here, I'm pulling up the detour map, and divert traffic, um, to the west along Ninth Street, uh, here, basically getting them up to Thirty-second Avenue. So, the, there's some obvious concerns from the, from the public of just additional nuances and, and just added time for, uh, getting to work, getting home, that kind of thing, but, uh, some additional concerns and coordination meetings that, that Melissa has coordinated with, um, local emergency services, uh, the school districts, uh, we've, we've had a series of meetings in the last, uh, week to two weeks, um, and so we've, we've really started to analyze what can be done in terms of keeping Fortieth Avenue at least partially open, um, during, during all of the construction. Uh, so this led to, uh, uh, the consultant putting together a potential plan that they have now shared with the contractor, Dakota Underground, um, as of Friday, and so that, at this point, Dakota Underground is, um, verbally anyway, uh, willing to modify their plans. Uh, basically, what we'll do is keep the east-west traffic, um, moving through, so we'll, um, add a little bit of pavement on the north side of the intersection, so that we can get head-to-head traffic going east-west, and focus on just the southern, call it two-thirds of the intersection, get that done by June fifteenth, then switch back over and do the, call it the north one-third of that intersection. This will allow us to keep east-west traffic open. Uh, there might be, uh, a period where, you know, of a day or two, a very short-term type full closure, but for the most part, during the duration of all of the construction, have it open. What we don't know yet are what are the cost implications and/or schedule implications, um, which is, the contractors analyzing things, and, uh, we have another meeting set up on Wednesday to, to further get into details with them. Uh, but I, at this point, just wanted to, uh, update the commission that we're working towards a plan to make such a modification, and to certainly put it out there that it's not going to be a, a free change, there's going to be a change order associated with it. Um, some things I can think of off the top of my head are, uh, the utility work would have been, um, done all in one trench, but if we're gonna phase this, there might be a portion that they have to bore, um, not significant costs, but some additional costs there. Uh, we might look at putting a temporary traffic signal, uh, to try to now manage how this traffic's gonna move through east-west, um, and then, of course, there, you know, just some other nuances, like, uh, the paving operation may not be, uh, a, a mainline paver that will get the concrete placed as they originally bid the project, they might have to take portions of this now and hand form it and hand pour it, adding a little bit of time, and, and again, some additional costs. So, I think at this point, it's, it's to, again, provide some information that we're looking to go this route, and if there are any immediate concerns, uh, comments, or, of course, questions, I'm certainly willing to, uh, take those at this point.
That's for Mr. Scott.
When do you, when do they plan to start construction? Because it's been, it was supposed to start today, there's all the shutdown and demolition of it, so what's the timeframe for that?
So, as of, uh, earlier this morning, they reached out and requested to start operations on Monday, the eighth. Um, as of late last week, in fact, I think as of Thursday, the comment from them was, "We don't know exactly when, we're thinking a couple of weeks," uh, so we did change those message boards to say mid-April. Of course, over the weekend, things change, contractors, you know, they figure some stuff out, or whatever happens, now they're asking to, to start on Monday, the eighth. The, the operation would be basically set up the closures, now if we move towards this particular, uh, concept, uh, the closures would at least allow east-west traffic on Fortieth Avenue, but set up closures and start removing the pavement, um, all of next week. The concerns that we have, uh, are things like during the, the spring melt, you know, that's, we're anticipating things to start moving here in the next few days, so next week might be, uh, pretty aggressive in terms of getting access to areas, making sure water is flowing where it needs to be going, and, and, uh, we might need some, some access into there. Uh, Chris has had that conversation with, uh, Dakota Underground, and they were very receptive, uh, to working with us, in fact, they've actually, um, staged some of their equipment on the Fifty-second Avenue Bridge, uh, working with Southeast Cass to, to do some potential mitigation, uh, type activities there, uh, if the, the flood were to require it, so, at least from that perspective, we're a little bit comfortable, but the, the messaging is, is really what, it, what gets to be difficult now. We've changed our, our mind two different times here in the last ten days, and that's starting to get difficult for the, for the public to understand, and especially, you know, entities like the Triumph Church that, you know, we just communicated late last week that, you know, we're thinking mid-April, and sure enough, now that's April eighth, so. Um, and I, I don't know if there's any comments regarding that, if we were to put them on, uh, delay, basically deny their request to start on the eighth, uh, again, that could come with potential, uh, time, uh, time or schedule adjustments and/or cost adjustments.
Additional questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you for the update.
I do have a question for you, though. Please, you mentioned they have, uh, construction here, you know, on Fifty-second Avenue on the bridge, uh, driving across the bridge on Thirty-second Avenue, I noticed a lot of debris up against our box culverts. Who's responsible for cleaning that out, so it doesn't cause any problems, is it us or is it the Corps of Engineers?
Uh, good, that's a good question, Commissioner Olson, uh, so, all the activities along the river, uh, the City of West Fargo is, is gonna assume responsibility for that, um, so, uh, this, I, I believe Public Works is gonna deploy their very own backhoe to that location. Other locations, we will, um, enter into an agreement with the contractor to mobilize a piece of equipment out there, so it's on the ready, on, now we'll have to pay a standby, uh, fee to have them there, uh, one of the rates I've seen is sixty dollars an hour, sort of thing, but, um, that way, as things start moving and it gets in the way, we can be quickly moved out to the side, or, or brought out of the way, so that water can, can flow through, and that is, you know, again, one of our primary concerns is ice jams and/or anything that can cause a, a dam effect, so. So, yeah, uh, along the river is the City of West Fargo, and the activities along the diversion will be Southeast Cass. Um, and to that, that note, uh, Tina just shared with me that, uh, Chris, uh, sent her a message, uh, apparently, uh, Chris got word that there's, um, uh, expected increase in the, the flow of the river, um, upstream, so, uh, that usually takes a few days to get to West Fargo, uh, in preparation of this increase in flow, they're actually gonna be shutting the, the diversion gates tonight. So, I, after the meeting, I will reach out to him myself and just make sure I'm fully aware of what's going on, but, um, I wanted to just share that with you, that, uh, as of tonight, I guess the plan is to shut our south gate at ninety-four and our north gate on the north side of town, with North Public Works.
Is this more released from Astro Beal, or what's he?
I, I'm not sure, the, the message says there's a jump by three feet upstream, so we're closing gates tonight. It's a pretty brief message, and, um, you know, a jump by three feet, depending on what gauge it is, might mean very little to us. I haven't had an opportunity to go look at it, so, yep.
Yeah, understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Next order of business, item number nineteen, correspondence, Mrs. Fisk?
I don't have any correspondence, but, but, you know, I'm, 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 I'm-
Is that include Dell? Everybody gives Dell a bet. Nothing else, Mrs. Fisk?
No.
All right. Commissioners, anything for the good of the order? Commissioner Simmons? Move to adjourn. Commissioner Olson, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You stand adjourned, thank you very-